I'd like to welcome everybody to our Levellworth City Commission meeting tonight, and I ask that you, if you could, please turn off or silence all your cell phones. And I'd like to remind everybody that every day on Channel 2, tune in 6:00 PM and midnight to check out our meetings on YouTube. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and call an order and ask that you please join us if you pledge allegiance, followed by a silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, in the name of God, indivisible, in every justice and honor.
All right, we're going to start off with a few proclamations. All right, City of Levellworth, Kansas. Whereas September 17, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America at the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition of this magnificent document, its memorable anniversary into the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year, are the President of the United States of America designation September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Griff Martin, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Levellworth, Kansas hereby proclaim 17, September 17 through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week. And to urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities with which that privilege involves. Loveworth Awareness Walk. All right, City of Levellworth, Kansas. Whereas the Levellworth Awareness Walk, L-N-W, is a beacon of remembrance and unity within our community, this annual event was established in 2018 in memory of Brother Michael Law, devout Christian, retired soldier, community leader, and exemplary past fraternity chapter president. Brother Michael Law served as a chapter president in our beloved fraternity. He played an instrumental role in shaping the lives of countless young individuals as a father figure and mentor, and whereas the Levellworth Awareness Walk serves a dual purpose on that keeps alive the memory of a man who was a tremendous advocate for local scholarships, loved his husband, a proud father, and a father figure and mentor of youth in the community, and whereas the Walk also empowers our local, our community by raising scholarship funds, providing educational opportunities, and fostering awareness about issues that matter deeply to us. The Pi Omicron Lambda Chapter of Alpha Pi Alpha Fraternity, Inc. has raised over $30,000 for deserving students, and whereas the Levellworth Awareness Walk unites us in a collective effort to continue Brother Michael Law's mission of making a positive impact in the lives of others and strengthening bonds within our community. Now therefore, I, Griff Martin, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Levellworth, Kansas hereby recognize and commemorate the significance of the Levellworth Awareness Walk.
On behalf of these distinguished gentlemen, the Chiomel, Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated, and Will, believe it Law and her support, Sister Delta Sorority Incorporated, Levellworth Chapter, in the name of Mike Law, just like I said, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And come out to the Walk on this Saturday.
Walk is this Saturday? Yes. Mr. Law was a great man, and this is a wonderful way to honor him. Thank you very much, you guys.
All right, next we have here National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Anybody from, just kind of, for the night, anybody change?
I don't think they made it yet, so we'll just go ahead.
City of Levellworth, Kansas. Whereas the City of Levellworth confirms that National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month promotes awareness of the importance of attending to our mental health as it is essential and acknowledges that those living with mental health disabilities are deserving of care, understanding, compassion, and pathways to hope, healing, recovery, and fulfillment. And whereas September was declared as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in 2008, in the years since, September has been a time to acknowledge those affected by suicide, raise awareness, and connect individuals with suicide ideation to treatment and support services as needed. And whereas, according to the CDC, each year more than 41,000 individuals die by suicide, leaving behind family, friends, colleagues, and community members to navigate the traumatic impacts of their loss. Now therefore, I, Griff Martin, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Levellworth, Kansas hereby proclaim, we recognize the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And with that, we'll move on to old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Mr. Kramer?
There's been no changes, it's up for the commission for a motion.
I move we approve the minutes of the August 22 meeting.
I second.
Vote's been seconded. I'd like to call for a motion, beginning with Commissioner Bowder.
Vote, you mean, aye?
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
And Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Aye. All right, vote passed 5-0. Moving on to second consideration ordinances. Number 8223, Adopt Standard Traffic Ordinance, 50th Edition.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes. The police chief is here for the next three items. If you have any questions related to these three items, but they're before you for final adoption tonight, and once again, Chief Kitchens is here if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I don't specifically.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 8223.
It's a roll call.
All right, Commissioner Bowder, go ahead.
Aye.
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 Aye, and then, all right.
Aye.
Pass. There we go. Second consideration ordinance, number 8224, Adopt Uniform Public Defense Code, 39th Edition.
Same issue on this one, there have been no changes since the first reading, and it's before you tonight for final adoption.
Okay. There's any questions from anyone right now? All right, we'll go ahead with a roll call vote with Mayor Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, pass 5-0 there. And then second consideration ordinance, number 8225, to adopt 2023 Intersection Traffic Control Device Master Index.
No changes.
No changes there. Any comments from anyone?
No.
All right, Commissioner Bowder will begin a roll call vote.
Yes, sir, aye.
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 Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consideration of the 2024 Operating in Capital Budgets and Housing Authority Budgets.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Mayor remotely in commission, the item before you was tabled at the August 22 city commission meeting. That is the vote on the 2024 Operating in Capital Improvement Budgets, as well as the resolution to approve the 2024 Housing Budget for Planters 2. So, at the August 22 meeting, we did table this item, we did hold the public hearing for the budget that night, and so tonight, what's before us, is at the August 22 city commission meeting, the Resolution B 2343, a resolution to exceed revenue neutral rate failed. The total city mill levy exceeded total revenue neutral by 0.419 mills, and so city staff was directed to and then examine the budget and will tonight recommend course of action to cut the 0.419 mills to a total year-to-year cut of 3.107 mills from the city's mill levy. The reduction of 0.419 is equivalent to about $127,313, and so there were a number of adjustments considered, and then we'll get to the recommendation. So when you're cutting an operating budget, there are three general approaches to reduce revenue from an operating budget. The first one is to eliminate ongoing expenses. These are commonly referred to as program changes. This approach aligns eliminating expenditures to match reduction in revenue. If you're going to have less revenue, you need to have ongoing, less ongoing revenue, you need to have less ongoing expense. And so when we looked at, these are evaluated some, what we look at is are there annual and capital costs over time? Are there costs that occur every year? And then also, are there costs, capital costs, related to that function? Is the program essential for the life, safety, or legal obligations of the city? Those are the first ones you would take off the table. And is there a benefit, is the benefit limited to a specific constituency? A second approach is to eliminate one-time expenditures. This method is a stopgap measure, it doesn't address the fundamental action of reduced revenue. In short, you have the same problem the following year, you've eliminated the expense for the current year, but again, the revenue at that point is no longer there for future years. So again, we looked at can the revenue from a one-time expenditures be used? Can it be used legally? We have restricted funds, whether those are federal funds, whether those are enterprise funds, whether they're restricted by current city ordinance, by state statute, or by the federal government. Is the expenditure critical to the life, safety, and legal obligations of the city? Is the benefit limited to a specific constituency? Go back just a touch, the last sentence, and right there says it mischaracterizes projects for revenue streams. I really want to hit on this just for a second. So if you were to say a specific project we wouldn't do in a given year, it's really the revenue stream that pays for that project. So it's the sales tax in this case, let's use Southside Park is on the books for next year. You're not necessarily removing Southside Park, what you're doing is removing the revenue stream that's budgeted for Southside Park. That same revenue stream was the same revenue stream that did the Doerty Park Playground, the Stubby Park Restroom, and next year does the, a public works in Police Department Storage Building. So it's an annual revenue that you're moving from the sales tax to the operating budget going forward. So then the last thing you look at is review and adjust unallocated reserves. Does the adjustment impact the city's financial standing? That's basically the litmus test for consideration of that as a method. So a couple of examples that we did look at, ongoing expense examples, one would be the elimination of the Performing Arts Center. The Performing Arts Center operates at a net loss of $30,000 annually, but in addition to that, it is, there is, the city is responsible for all capital costs associated with that building. We have done extensive HVAC and electrical repairs, roofing repairs, facade repairs, and so that's an example of something that has an annual cost or an annual loss to the city, plus ongoing repairs. In addition, the city is not required to provide funding for a venue or for activities associated with the Performing Arts Center, and the use of the Performing Arts Center is used by a dedicated group, but it is a limited constituency. Similar to that, we looked at closing the indoor pool at the Riverfront Community Center. That operates at a net loss of about $170,000 a year. That's primarily lifeguards, janitorial, water, electric, chemicals, all the things that go into running an indoor aquatic center. And in addition to that, when the pool does require maintenance for the health and safety of its users, that is painting, caulking, sealing, walls, roofs, flooring, all those type amenities, city is not required to provide an indoor pool, and the use of the pool is limited. It's again, a dedicated group, but it is limited if you look at the scope of the entire city. Finally, one of the things we looked at, and this is not an exhaustive list, but just to give you some of these examples, is eliminating the business grant program. City provides between $80,000 and $100,000 in annual grants to local businesses. The city is becoming increasingly reliant on sales tax to operate. In the future, it may be necessary to use the sales tax revenue for core services. The use of the program is limited to 20 or so businesses a year, as far as the constituency. Again, these were just looked at, it's not an exhaustive list. So an example of some one-time expenditures that we looked at with the criteria listed before, and again, this should be looked at as the elimination of a revenue stream, not necessarily the elimination of a project, is to reduce or eliminate the Cody Sports Court project. The project is at a level, a budgeted level, that would more than cover the revenue shortfall for 2024. It is related to healthy and active community, but not essential to core service obligations. Constituency for basketball or racket splash paddle sports is growing, but it is limited. Reduce or eliminate Southside Park project. Project could be downgraded or eliminated to cover the shortfall. Again, that's the revenue stream we should look at, but the project is a neighborhood park that benefits residents in the specific area, as opposed to a community park like Cody or Stubby. Finally, just another example is eliminate the trails funding. This is an annual allocation, so you would be moving this revenue stream from the sales tax budget to the operating budget. It's a relatively new application or allocation, would not cover the entire shortfall, but represents about a third of that shortfall, and could be combined with other upgrades at city parks or facilities, such as the community center, to reach that number. So all of that really boils down to what's the recommendation? So all of the previous programs and projects were reviewed by the city commission during the budget sessions, and there was no consensus to cut those. There's no public desire to cut those, so therefore, we felt the executive team proposing cutting those at this time would not allow for public appropriate feedback or engagement, and did not have the support of the commission. So after full consideration, the executive team recommends reducing the city's reserve position in the following way. It is a limited impact, given the strength of our reserves, and so that's why we feel comfortable recommending this. The city's strong reserve position allows for a 0.53% reduction in total reserve levels to meet the city commission direction regarding the overall city mill. If you look in this far right-hand corner, it would take the city's general reserve position from 29.94% to 29.41%. That's still, we believe, close enough and strong enough at the 30% revenue reserve target. The reduction in reserve will not impact the city's financial position in any substantial way. The reduction still keeps the city essentially at the 30% reserve target that we aim for. Finally, the reduction also allows the city to start to engage the public and start conversations about potential program reductions for the 2025 budget. As we get into the spring, we don't want to get into the budget situation here at the end and look for ways to cut. So as we go through these during the budget cycle next year, we probably need to start a list and get some consensus and some feedback on some actual programs and reductions. You don't do more with less, you don't do the same with less, you do less with less. So if that's the direction, we need to have those conversations and have them with the public and get feedback on those. So again, sales tax is showing signs of retreating in the post pandemic levels. The city's reserves in excess of the target were allocated with this budget, so we used our extra sales tax revenue above forecast and our reserves over the 30% to get us where we got. We feel comfortable recommending the use of about 0.53% of the city's reserves to get us that extra 0.419 mills, and that is the recommendation of the executive budget team to the city commission tonight for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Kramer?
I have a question.
Yeah?
What would be the final mill rate then? It was last time it was 22.9 something?
Yes, I have that. So it's a reduction of 3.107, and so that takes it, oh, I didn't do the final number, five, four, five. 21.544, I believe is the number.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of open it up, Mr. Kramer, and everybody here, and everybody on the phone right now. Any comments or thoughts about this right now?
So, Paul, this is, so, Jermaine, so are, is the recommendation to, is to get the money from the reserve, the city reserves?
Yes, sir.
To fund it from there? Okay, all right, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, all right. Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Wilson. Mr. Kramer, if you could just, kind of to recap too, I know that we reached out to the library, because I, where we were to begin to kind of refresh everybody, you know, we, you guys came in, city budget came in at the revenue neutral rate, which was what was desired and what you guys came back with. And how we were over was with the budget with the library. I know you reached out to them and to see if they could do anything to help out with that, even a partial cutback, any information you can share on that?
I sent a letter to the library director, just informing him of the direction of the commission, and asked if there was, the library board would reconsider in any way the mill levy, and they did respond that they were reaffirming the mill levy that they had submitted to the city.
Okay, so now, no changes there?
It's a little late to ask them to completely redo their budget anyway, but they are guaranteed that, those funds, and I think that they agree with that too. They thought they should, should have that for their budget.
Well, the library has spoken on their end, so I have nothing else to add. I do appreciate the work you guys have done to come back with several talking points about this. I think talking about the 2025 budget early on from a program standpoint would be a great thing, but outside of that, I don't have anything else to add, so if nobody else does, I just need a motion.
I would just say I'd be, I'd be okay with taking it out of the reserves. I was not okay with taking it out of economic development or any of the other programs. So I'm okay with taking it out of reserves.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Leonhard?
Okay, I couldn't hear the last thing, so someone motioned and someone...
No.
No motion on the table at this point, just still open for comments.
Okay, no, I just didn't hear, so somebody motioned to, what, approve the budget?
Oh, I actually, Commissioner Leonhard, I just asked for if anybody wanted to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
You're good.
No, that's okay, I thought you wanted additional comments, so.
Or those if you have them, so.
I don't think she can hear you too well.
Yeah, I was talking to my mic, I need to be talking over there. Okay, all right, well, with that, if anybody would like to make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Yes.
All right, I move to approve the capital budget as...
2024.
...say the 2024, sorry, operating in capital budgets.
As presented.
As presented, thank you.
Have a second?
Have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, with that, we'll begin voting with Mayor Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, motion passed, 3-2.
And then the other item is the resolution, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, sorry, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and then the resolution, which I think you were getting to.
Yeah, Resolution B 2344, approval of the 2024 Housing Budget for Planters 2.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, I have no comments on this. This didn't change, this wasn't tabled, we're just brought it forward with the operating budget, and again, these are federal funds that are used to operate Planters 2 in the Housing Department.
Okay. Any comments?
No.
Okay. Mayor Wilson, Commissioner Leonhard?
No comment. No, no comment.
Okay. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move to consider Resolution B 2344, approval of the 2024 Housing Budget for Planters 2.
Second.
All right, motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
All right, motion passed 5-0.
Commissioner Moore? Hey, can you hear?
Yes.
I just want to say, hey, excuse me, I'm getting ready to exit off the call. I wish I could have been present, to get tonight with the Walk, got out of the hospital, keep in your prayers, and like I said, just want to thank the city staff, as well as the public library, for the services that you all provide, our community, and all the hard work, and all the... Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson.
Okay, Wilson.
We'll be praying for you, yep. Okay, from here, we'll go to public comment, so.
The first person up is Josh Winter.
All right.
Hi, my name is Josh Winter, at 1118 Wildwood Street. Just wanted to make a brief comment in regards to the stuff I've had with Mr. McPherson and his request for a sign exception at what's called as the Old Hurricanes Building, and just kind of disappointed just to hear that he's had a lot of problems, kind of had a hard time with what his vision has been for the building, and as I've talked to him, he seems like he has, you know, well thought out, you know, planning, he's invested a lot of, you know, capital and time and energy in the building there, and the neighborhood that I work, that I drive through all the time, and just, I would like to see the commission consider, you know, helping along with what he would like to do there, I think he has a good vision, and more than just, you know, his specific business and signage, just concerned that the, you know, they have a business owner who's wanting to bring the neighborhood up a level, invest in the community, and it just seems like he is, as I've talked to him, had a hard time, just with various things, and that's not the result I'd like to see from businesses coming to the community, we have plenty of empty buildings and old buildings, and to see someone wanting to develop one is encouraging, and should be encouraged in any way possible by the commission, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Winter.
Our next person up is Renee Chappett Lemmons.
Hi, Renee Chappett Lemmons, I own a business at 223 South Fifth Street in Levellworth. My kind of piggybacking on this just a little bit, of course, I want to say I'm really glad that I get to talk to you guys in person tonight. I want to thank Nancy and Jermaine for responding to my email that I sent back in May, and coming to talk to me about some issues that we have as downtown business owners, because I think that's very important. I know that the public in the future, with this election coming up, they take the time and that they really do their research, and they get out and they vote, because our downtown is the heart of our community, we're the first city of Kansas, we have a lot to offer down here, and if you as commissioners aren't visiting and asking what we can do to help you to change our downtown, where are we going to go? We're not going to go anywhere. It's the downtown businesses that support your local schools, they support all the fundraisers downtown, we support everything, we pay our taxes, we take old crappy buildings and pour our heart and soul into them. Anyways, I'm getting off topic, but what I would like to say is there's a few things that we really truly need to look at. For one, the sign ordinances, the permit issues, these really, really do need to be rewritten. I've met with multiple business people, and everybody's in the same boat here. For instance, we can only have two temporary signs per year. What if you have events going on, or fundraisers going on, or sales going on? I can only have two banners permitted per year. What if I have four fundraisers that year, and I want to, I want a banner up for each one of those? You can't have it. The inconsistency of having who pays for permit and who doesn't. If you drive around downtown, I promise you, you're going to see so many inconsistencies. Guess who's paying those permits? The ones who actually applied for the permit. The ones that didn't, they're off the target, they're not on the radar, but once you apply for a permit, you're going to be paying those permits for the rest, the whole entire time you have a business downtown. The ones that didn't go by the book, nobody says a word to them. So that's super frustrating. There's one place that's getting charged 3... There's one place that's getting charged $300 for an open sign because it's not affixed to their building. It's a freestanding open sign. Why? What's the point of that? I don't understand that. Another thing is we have all of our focus on the wrong thing here. We're focusing on business owners who are taking the time to redo these buildings and to do the right thing and to keep our business going. What we should be focusing on are the empty buildings that set vacant, that have broken windows, they have graffiti on them, they have profanity drawn in the dust because they don't take the time to wash those windows. All of those buildings are doing is bringing down our downtown. They're not helping whatsoever, but there's no ordinances in place that I know of or that have been enforced to keep that from happening. So why don't we take the focus off of the businesses that are trying to do good for our community and focus on the people who are just buying buildings and collecting them and leaving them empty for whatever reason?
Yeah, and it's time, time a lot, man.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Only one more, Eric McPherson?
Hi, guys. I'm Eric McPherson.
Hello, good evening.
I have learned a lot moving to Leavenworth. We bought our building in 2020. We just wanted a nice sign, wanted a nice clean building. Our plans were to restore the building to what it once was, clean up an abandoned property on the abandoned side of downtown Leavenworth. There's been nothing but red tape and roadblocks. I asked the city about crumbling sidewalks around the building and I was told it was my property. But there's a downtown business grant to help me replace them, so we paid to replace them and the city paid me back. That was great. The next roadblock was parking. There's about 10 parking spots in front of my building, but those aren't real parking spots according to the city, even though they've been there going back into the 60s. Now they want me to pave the parking lot behind the building. I had to get my first variance meeting. These meetings are $350 for the meeting, $200 to mail everyone within 200 feet of the building, and $8 to get a copy of the deed, which the city already has. The variance board decided my parking spots were not in front of the building, like has been done for the last 65 years, but they're on Broadway between Delaware and Cherokee. I've never seen anyone park in the middle of Broadway. The variance board did say I did not have to pay for the parking lot, though. Then we started renovations. The drawings had to be done by an architect. This is an extremely expensive process. It was a challenge to even find one to handle such a small scale project. I had quotes ranging as high as $24,000 to draw a 1,200 square foot building or store where I'm not doing anything structural, nothing mechanical. It was just a drawing. This is when we found there was another downtown business grant to bring the voting up to ADA codes, add HVAC, update old electrical systems, which we were approved for, so once again we were considered a downtown business. Then we come to the signage. I designed a clean classy sign that held the original look of the building. The sign was one that looked like the old Oldsmobile service sign that was next to the garage door that was when it's Perry Black Cadillac. The sign was instantly denied because it would hang over city-owned property. Now the city owns the sidewalks, but I owned them two years ago. But I could change it with another variance meeting. The meeting came up and there was only four members. During the meeting, the rooftop sign came up, I cannot afford to remove it. I still can't afford to remove it. I spent six figures remodeling that store. One of the board members joked that I could borrow her chainsaw. I did not find that nearly as funny as she did. The rooftop sign is part of the building. It is connected through the building into the foundation. It's not as easy as just taking a chainsaw to it. The city said there was no prior code violations on the sign, but they were going to violate me because the Hurkins Automotive sign has not been removed because the building has been gone for six months. I believe he retired around 2017, 2018. If they wanted that sign gone, they had a long time to actually ask the previous owner to take care of it. After that meeting, they said they were going to violate me for having the Hurkins sign up. I hired a local artist to cover it up, and the best way I know how is the only way I can afford to have it done. Probably not the right way to do it, but that's what I had. I asked for clarification from the codes office when I got my first violation. I got no response. I removed the temporary banners and I got another violation saying I had 10 days to remove the rooftop sign. Why is my sign such a problem? We have buildings falling apart, we have storefronts being used, there's storage and not being leased out, they're not being sold, and they're just downtown rotting businesses. And we're bothering, we're really coming after me for trying to do something good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or not, but I know there've been frustrations for sure over the last several years and with different fees and regulations and policies and different things like that. The sign one, Mr. Kramer, if we could maybe table that to talk about further and maybe review of certain code policy or anything like that, just to kind of look at some options, because I know it's not the intention to frustrate new investors into our downtown, but I would like to, if there's anything we could do, to maybe put that on as an engine item going forward.
Sure, we can give the commission a briefing of what the signed code is, and at that point, you know, if there's changes to be made, it's made by the governing body through the planning commission, and staff is the enforcement arm of the policy set by the planning commission and the city commission. So we can certainly go through what those signed codes are and what are the rules and regulations related to that.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. We had one more comment or?
First, I didn't put my name on that, but I was going to say.
Sir, could you go up to the podium there and?
You said your name and house.
Name and address.
I'm Glen Tassaro and I'm at 2812 Garland Street. And up until January, I owned a small business in town. I would still own the business in town, except the plans to move away fell apart in June and started closed in January. But up until today, I couldn't tell you what Eric McPherson looks like. I never met him, but we had a lot of conversation online. I do know Renee, and I took over her building on Delaware Street back in 2019. It just found it ironic when I saw what Eric is going through here with the whole signage of that building. He took a building that probably would end up in the next couple of years looking like some of the others do on Cherokee across the street and turned it into something. And I give a lot of credit for that. I found it ironic that when I opened up on Delaware Street, though I didn't put a sign up on the front of the building, I did put lettering in the building, and somebody said to me, wow, that was pretty slick, you kind of bypassed the permit. Well, that wasn't what I was doing. It's just what I wanted to do for signage is lettering in the window. But I did have two 11-foot tall feather signs on either side of the awning in front of the building, one for the Gelato, one for the Italian, and I still. And on the street, I had one of these sandwich, plastic, sandwich board signs, if you will. And for two years, there wasn't a peace maiden. So when I finally decided at the end of '21 that we were going to move up to Fourth Street and I moved into the A and D Hearing Building, I put those flags against the building and I put the same sandwich board sign in the grass and anchored it to the ground, because there's a wind turbine, it's down there over on Fourth Street. And within five days, I turned the key, I got a letter of cease and desist, we're moving here and get fined. And I kind of laughed about it because this is ridiculous, but I took them down because it's what the city said to do. In the front of the building, there's a structure there that is on Ben Dickinson's 1964. The top panel was mined for the storefront, and it had two white plastic panels in it. I was taking those down and wanting to letter them. I spoke to some of the commissioners in this town about it, because when I did what I thought the right thing and called the city hall, I was told, yeah, we just need a sketch. And I know I'm off of this thing with Eric, but I'm really not. In any case, all you needed was a sketch and an aerial view of it. And I kind of made a joke and I said, you want helicopter view, is that what we're looking for? And she didn't find it funny, but I thought it was cute. Anyway, she said, I can do it for you. She went to Google Earth and the first thing she said to me on the phone was, nope, we can't do that, that's a sightline issue. And I said, I'm not putting up a structure. I'm replacing, I'm lettering two panels that are already on that sign. And there was no way around it. So she told me it was likely with Eric, $350, come into the meeting on February 28th of '22. The commission's going to pass it because they just did that for another business. And I found that kind of crazy, and I said, what about banners? Well, you can have one up to 50 square feet. Can I double side it? No. Okay, you can have it up twice.
Smart.
Anyway, to the point with Eric, and if I bumped into him an hour ago, I wouldn't have known it was him, because we've never met. So I own nothing, he owes me nothing. But I find it ludicrous that the city will fight tooth and nail with every small business. And I found out the reason that I couldn't do what I wanted to do on Fourth Street, which was nothing more than use two panels that were already there, is because all of a sudden it's a state issued highway and they have their own barriers. Well, you know what? Then the city has nothing to say about it at all if common sense enters in. Does that make sense?
And I appreciate that.
The gentleman wanted to revitalize that building to what it was back in the 60s. Not put up some wild crazy sign, and the city is fighting tooth and nail. And I'm sorry, I won't be.
That's okay, that's okay. I appreciate your comments, and we're going to take it up and look at our policies going forward.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will, no more public comment. We'll move to the general items. Consider the transient merchant waiver for Dark River Artifact Show Riverfront Community Center.
This will be our city clerk, Sarah Boninsteiner.
Mayor Potem and Commissioners, before you this evening, for consideration is a request for transient merchant permit waiver to use the Riverfront Community Center on April 6, 2024, for an artifact, rocks, and fossils collector show. There was a show last year that you all approved, and it had over 120 tables with displays from nine different states. And the vast majority of the displays do stay one to two nights in our local hotels and eat at our local restaurants. Attendance from last year's show was around 400 people with items for sale that would include strictly artifact and fossil related items, display cases, car blocking sticks, art depicting Native American life, and et cetera. The city code prohibits transient merchant permits on city property, which would include the Riverfront Community Center, but the city code also allows the commission to grant a waiver. All fees for the use of the facility and permits would still apply, as the waiver would simply allow the sale to be held on city property. So tonight, the request before you is to grant the waiver request for a transient merchant permit. I can answer any questions you may have. Tammy Metzger, the community center manager and applicant, Mr. John Cride are here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody questions or?
No, I saw you last year.
Okay, I don't either. I'm all about it, so yeah, with that, I just need a motion.
Tell us about this event, maybe?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, yeah, free advertising, here you go.
We're just at artifact show. We had people from nine states, all the way out to Indiana, Kentucky, Illinois, and from the other side, Colorado, Oklahoma.
That's awesome.
South Dakota, North Dakota.
That's great.
They came in from all over. Usually, most of them came in on Friday night because they were allowed to set up that night, so they stayed in the local hotels, ate at the restaurants, as she said. It was a good time, the public comes in, they get to see a lot of things that they don't normally see in some of the museums even.
Thank you, thank you, sir. That's great.
Yeah, cool, hopefully keep ramping it up, so.
Yeah, it's double.
Cool deal.
And if I could just say something, I'd like to ask if you consider implementing a process for people like me who have received a merchant waiver in the past and have had zero issues, to be able to purchase a waiver in the future without having to come before the council every time. I plan to do this every year until I'm no longer able to.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you, definitely can consider that, so.
Appreciate your time.
I'll see how that works.
No other comments then? Anybody? Consider a motion now?
I move to grant the waiver of a transient merchant permit for the use of the community center for the Dark River Artifact Show on April 6, 2024.
Second.
I second.
All right, the motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
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 Motion passed four, zero. All right, thank you, very much. Item eight, consider cereal malt beverage license for Leavenworth Mart LLC, DBA JK Mart, 300 North Fourth Street.
This will be on our city clerk?
Mayor Potem and Commissioners, before you this evening, is a request for a 2023 off-premise consumption cereal malt beverage license for Leavenworth Mart LLC doing businesses JK Mart located at 300 North Fourth Street. Due to an ownership change of the location, a new cereal malt beverage license is required by state law. The location has a current city health permit and the application has been reviewed and approved by the police department. So tonight, the request comes to this body for final approval to issue the 2023 off-premise consumption license.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at all? Okay, with that, I'll also entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the cereal malt beverage license for Leavenworth Mart LLC doing businesses JK Mart at 300 North Fourth Street.
Second.
All right, the motion has been seconded. I'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed four, zero. Next item, update for unsafe fire damaged structures, 707 Pawnee, given 30-day extension at July 25th.
Howardet, our chief building inspector on this one?
Good evening. As I say, this is an update. The structure was damaged on fire in March of this year. Commission held a public hearing in July, giving them 30 days to begin repairs or demolition. The structure has since been sold. The previous owner, from this July meeting, sold it to new folks. They were issued a building permit August 9th, electrical, mechanical plumbing permits August 22nd. They have started to make some repairs, but it is not close to being, you know, occupiable yet at this point. There is a representative of the owner here to answer any questions you might have for them.
Sure. Might to come on up?
How are you doing?
Doing all right.
I'm, this is 707 Pawnee Street. I do everything. I have an appearance, I have everything ready. I just start work on August 9th, and I'm beginning to do it in Timor. I have an estimated maybe 120. Because everything, or everything roofing is new right now, finished today. The trash, I haven't before too much in the back or the front, but today is done. I have a picture, so everything is clean right now. Everything is fine, so I think it's ready for work and maybe October is done. So everything is new, electric, plumbing, everything is really new.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Definitely want to turn it over to the commission.
Excuse me, before you go, do you have a projection of when everything, when people will be able to move into that building? When can it be occupied?
Yeah. So what is our projection?
Who's that? Yeah, when can it be occupied?
How long is it going to take you to finish?
Three months, everything. I, the start work August 9th, and I didn't finish October, maybe 20. Around three months.
Mr. Burdette, there's been a lot of, a few things getting knocked out since he took ownership. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've seen progress in the last week, definitely. And I did ask them to clean up the site because it was, it was not looking good, and they did do that. They have, the roof is, they were putting the roof on today.
Okay.
And keep in mind, we don't need it to be able to be occupied to release the funds. We just need certain things done, and I believe House communicated those, so.
Typically, we release the funds once the exterior repairs are completed and the interior is ready for sheetrock. We're not there yet.
Okay, sure, okay. I just comments, and I'm sorry. My thought is maybe we go with possible 60-day review again, and you're thinking 90 days, but maybe see where that's at, just kind of keep it, keep it moving, instead of maybe get to 90 days and then make another action, but that is my thought, I don't know. Commissioner Leonhard, any thoughts?
Yeah, just what you said, yeah, that would be fine with me, a 60-day extension.
And if at any point between now and the 60 days, we feel that they've met the requirements to release the insurance funds, we'll bring the item back to you at the next scheduled commission meeting.
And again, the goal is just being to keep, keep it moving and see some more, you know, progress.
Maybe even more faster.
So, yeah.
I'd be fine with 60 days.
Okay. Cool deal. And with that. And with that.
Motion to extend.
Yeah, motion to extend to 60 days.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded. With that, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed, four, zero. Thank you, sir.
No, no, that was on O Sage. Sorry.
All right, next item. See, Resolution D 2345, Wilcott Brewing Company, Oktoberfest, special event, street closure for possession and consumption of alcohol.
Mr. Mayor Portim, we're excited about this one and I'm gonna turn it over to our city clerk to talk about it. And I know we have, I think we have Sean Wilcott here also, so I'm sure he'll want to talk about it as well. So Sarah?
Mayor, Portamen Commissioners, before you this evening for consideration is a resolution approving the Wilcott Brewing Company's special event known as Oktoberfest Beer Festival, which would close motor vehicle traffic to a specific street and allow for the possession and consumption of alcohol and liquor. The event will take place on Saturday, October 7th, from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The street that will be closed is South Sixth Street from Delaware to Cherokee and will be closed by Leavenworth Police Department on around 3:00 a.m. the morning of the event. By approving this resolution, it allows the event to have the beer and/or alcohol outside of their establishment and within the confines of the street closure. The alcohol-friendly area will be clearly marked and roped off within the festival. As Mr. Kramer stated, Sean Wilcott Brewing is here along with Chief Kitchens if you have any questions for us.
Okay. Mr. Wilcott, before we get to you, any questions?
Sounds like fun to me.
I agree. We are talking about closing the street from the south end of the northern intersection to the north end of the southern intersection. So Sixth Street, or Cherokee and Delaware will still give travel.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any issues with any of the other businesses down there that you know of?
So the agreement that we have and the understanding is we'll be leaving the bank's drive-through open until noon when that, when that business closes and then we'll be able to transfer that barrier up to Delaware.
So you checked with them, that's good, that's good.
Commissioner, we send the traffic sergeant over to the mayor to verify that, make sure they were aware of that, they were fine with that.
Okay, cool deal. Can you tell us anything about your event, a little bit more detail?
So we're very excited about it. We've done the same event up in our first location. This will be our third year up there and then our first one here with this opportunity. We try to bring in lots of activities and festivals. We have a glass blower that will be coming in with a glass blowing on site. There'll be mobile golf simulators, axe throwing. I think there's beer stein holding contests. There's three or four food vendors that are, that are scheduled to be on site. We have some other games and activities. So we're really looking forward. There's two live bands that are scheduled for throughout the day and then karaoke that evening inside once the downside, outside winds down. So we're very excited to try to be integrated into the downtown district and bring some value, what we hope is value to the community.
You guys are definitely contributing to adding some more life to that part of the city right there.
My wife's very proud that so far there's like 1,700 interested parties on Facebook, so she's, she's excited in that regard.
Good, that's good.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor Portim, from the staff level, I just want to thank Sean and his group from the time that they started Wilcott through the permit regulations and through all the work they've been great to work with and the street closure really worked with us, so it's, it's nice to have worked with Wilcott on this. So it's been, it's been great from our side.
That's awesome. I appreciate the follow-through too. You said what you were gonna do last year, you know, and, and you did, so it speaks highly of you guys. So, no, with that, don't have any other questions? Go ahead.
Are you gonna have anybody other than Wilcott Brewing there as far as serving?
From a, from a beer standpoint?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the legality of being able to do that has some, some tweaks to that. So we had reached out and had attempted that, but through the hurdles of that, that was prevented. So we will be using, I think we have 17 beers on draft right now and we should have one or two more by that time. And the Oktoberfest just got tapped Tuesdays, or last Thursday, so you can come in and give it a shot early if you want.
I guess I'll have to try that.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the adopting approval of Resolution B 2345 for Wilcott Brewing Company Oktoberfest special event closure as presented.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Could begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, four, zero. Thanks very much.
Thank you all, really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, next item, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider award of bid for 2023 to 2024 salt. It's that time of year again?
Yes, it is. Brian?
Thank you all. As mentioned, the item this evening is to consider award of the salt purchase for 23 and 24. The procurement this year is for 100, excuse me, 1,000 tons of crushed de-icing rock salt. The city did replenish our salt supply this spring and summer, so our bay is completely full. However, a winter with a number of both small and large events could require the purchase of additional material. In previous years, we requested 1,500 tons. However, with our current supply and our use of salt brine, we feel this year that reducing the amount is appropriate. Leavenworth County does advertise salt bids for their needs and in their bid specifications, they allow cities within the county to piggyback on to their bid specs. Leavenworth County did open their bids on August 8th and the county awarded the contract to the low bidder, which this year was Central Salt LLC out of Lyons, Kansas. As mentioned, Public Works is utilizing salt brine to pre-treat our streets. Salt brine is applied before storm events to help melt snow and ice from underneath. We initially started treating only the hot spots, but we have added significant more capacity over the last year. And as a result, we will be pre-treating more streets in 23 and 24 and hopefully depending less on the salt application after the event. The city currently has significant stockpiles in our dome. Budget impact will depend on the severity of the winter season. Funding is available in 2023 for the purchase of the full 1,000 tons. Annual usage is dependent on the storm types and frequency. Staff recommends the city commission approve the Leavenworth County bid for rock salt at $58.74 a ton for up to 1,000 tons from Central Salt LLC. And if we don't have any events this year, we won't spend a dime. But if we have events, we will, we will eat into that, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Faust. What do you, comparing this year to last year around this time, what did it do? What did the market do, the salt market? Did it go up a little bit or?
Yeah, I mean, last year we had, let's see if we have the price. Last year we worked independent salt at 57.61 and this year at 58.74. It didn't go up a lot this year, so.
Yeah, okay. Cool. Any questions? All right. We're hoping like you, they don't have to use much of it this year. So, no, I appreciate it, Mr. Faust. I don't have any other comments. So with that, I'd like to consider a motion.
I move the, we already approved in the county bid. I move that we piggyback on the county and their bid for rock salt at $58.74 per ton for up to 1,000 tons from Central Salt LLC.
Second.
I second.
All right, motion's been seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passed, four, zero. Thanks, Mr. Faust. All right, last item here to consider the approval of the proposal for services for Cody Park Sports Court replacement project.
This will be Steve Grant, the director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Paul. Mayor Portim, Commissioners, good evening. Good to be here with you this evening. The issue is to approve the, consider approval of the proposal for professional services for the construction project at Cody Park and for the replacement of the sports courts at, at the park. As a refresher, this is in the 2024 CIP for construction. It is, it is removal of the tennis court area up near the restroom. There's two tennis courts. There's the concrete structure that's a handball slash racquetball structure. And then it will also include all of the lighting, the fencing, the, the surrounding planters and sidewalks and everything associated to give it a whole brand new, brand new look with, for up there. So, so as I've mentioned, this, this proposal, we sent out a request for proposals for design services and construction and overall professional services for the entire project. It's gonna be quite an extensive process as, as I know the commission is aware and staff is aware, we've had a lot of interest in this, this project. We go into it with no perceived, no preconceived notions as to what exactly is going in there with the exception of dedicated pickleball courts. We've got a lot of, a lot of interest in dedicated pickleball courts. Beyond that, as we go into the design phase with this proposal, should it be approved tonight, we will, we'll hold a couple of public care, a couple of public meetings down at the community center, get input from all, from the citizens after, after we do some, some site work and survey work to see exactly what the size and slope everything is, get input from the citizens and then from there come up with a final design. So that'll, that'll be the first part of, of the contract with the design firm. From there, the rest of the professional services will include, will include bid specifications, the development of drawings, project administration, and, and then all the way through the bidding process and then into construction and actual construction administration. So with that, we put out a request for proposals. We put it all of our local media sites on the website and we also posted at Drexel Technologies, which is a, a plant room utilized by a lot of general contractors in the Kansas City metro area. And we did, we received one, one proposal from VSR Design to provide these professional services for this project. It's in the amount of $63,615. We have worked with VSR Design before. They were the, they provided these same services when we redid Sportsfield back in 2010, 2011, very successfully so. We held meetings, kind of the same type of scenario, then getting public input in what we can do to best, to come up with the best project and output for the, for the citizens. So with that, there, there is $45,000 in the, in the CIP this year for, for this design contract. The rest of the remaining $18,615 will come out of the project, the money that's here for the project and the CIP for 2024.
Okay.
With that, staff recommends approval of the proposal from VSR Design in the amount not to exceed $63,615. And with that, if I can try and answer any questions for you.
This has been a long time coming and I know there are a lot of people that are looking forward to this, so. Several years, in fact.
Some of them know the specifications.
Some of them would like to be involved with the design, so we're gonna have that opportunity. And I believe it'd be the first dedicated pickleball complex in, in the county, so.
Great, that would be great.
Yeah, no, thank you. Mr. Grant, Commissioner Leonhard, any, any thoughts or comments?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Grant, just need a motion.
I move, oh, go ahead.
Okay. I move that the city approve the proposal from VSR Design for professional services in an amount not to exceed $63,615.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, four, zero. Thanks very much. Any other comments, Mr. Kramer, or anything before we move to the consent agenda?
We do that after the consent agenda.
Do the consent agenda first.
Okay, sure.
Okay, are you ready for the consent agenda?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Kamal Leonhard, I move to approve claims for August 19th, 2023 through September 8th, 2023, in the amount of $6,598,639.40. Net amount for payroll number 17, effective August 25th, 2023, in the amount of $396,105.71. Includes police and fire pension in the amount of $7,134.65. And payroll number 18, effective September 8th, 2023, in the amount of $379,315.80, no police and fire pension.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded. Beginning the voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed, four, zero.
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. First of all, I want to have a quick discussion so I can make sure I'm on the same page when we talk about wanting to have a study session or a discussion. There's a lot of stuff brought up. There was earlier signs, parking, sidewalks, board of zoning appeals. There's a big difference in a lot of these factors. Board of zoning appeals are set by state statute for cities that have zoning ordinances and the state statute governs how board of zoning appeals work, what is considered by them. They're quasi judicial boards, so appeals to them go to district court. So there, we can provide some, just some information about what those are, but a lot of those are not set by the city of Leavenworth. That's the same thing with sidewalks. Sidewalks are responsibility of the adjacent property owner, but they are a public means of transportation, so you can't block them. So those things are also set by state statute. So I want to make sure that I communicate that sign codes, that kind of stuff is, is up to the city and some other things. But a lot of these appeal processes and responsibility for stuff like sidewalks or roadways or encroachment on other properties is not under the purview of the city. So we would probably start with an overview of sign, the sign code and kind of what dictates that, whether you're in the central business district, the office business district, the downtown general business district and stick to that unless there was some other areas that you wanted me to cover to start.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, there's, I was, when I met with Ms. Renee, it was, we were talking a lot about, it would be nice for, as a new business comes in here, to have a packet of information about the sign codes and, and, you know, just some explanations of what is required when, when they come in so that they're not hitting it piecemeal, this, this, then, then this happens, then this happens, then this happens. It would be nice for them to have a full.
We catch a lot of them if they come to the city first. A lot of times if they purchase a building, we don't know that, but you're right, we do, we do have a one pager now that we did about six months ago on some sign stuff, but we, if we can catch it first, we can eliminate a lot of that, but a lot of times we don't. But that can be part of the discussion too, ways to get that out.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, if we could begin with the signs you already hit on, so I think that's just, it's been, it's come up numerous times from different folks in the past and I would love to look at that and just kind of do a refresher, so.
But I think, Commissioner Bowder, what you were speaking of wasn't just signs.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
No, parking, other things, right. Who's, who's responsible for what?
All the things that new business, you know, somebody who's contemplating coming in and setting up a business here in the city of Leavenworth, here's everything you will have to do before you open your doors to the first customer so that they know flat out before they decide whether to come into the city with a business or not.
Well, and there's, there's a difference between setting up on a downtown street and Fourth Street.
Absolutely, there's a difference. You know, in the city of Leavenworth, I know, I know, you know, I'm gonna lose some businesses here. We actually have far fewer regulations. Most cities have what are called overlay districts. So not only do you have what zoning requirements you have for parking or signs or occupancy, you have overlay districts in certain corridors or certain districts that add a whole nother level that you have to be aware of. So th- those are the things that we don't have, but you do have to be, it seems complex, but we are pretty simple as far as complexity goes, but we can go through some of that.
I would love to highlight that on a one pager if that was a packet. This is what we're not gonna require you to do, like, you know.
Right, we used to have an arterial overlay district on Fourth Street that governed building materials, sizes, illumination, and we, we stripped that out a while ago, but, but most cities on their main stretch also have what are called arterial overlay districts that impose a second set of limitations or concerns related to all sorts of operations of a business.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, and we don't have a general business license as well as, as New York City does.
No, I think, you know, definitely if, if, as, as we continue to go down this road, if, you know, as long as any packets we've put together are not warning people like, are you sure you really want to come to Leavenworth, you know, if it's not that type of, you know, type of, you know, message or anything like that?
Not that message, we want to say.
Well, and, and I think we want to continue to promote a culture of kind of creativity, and, and that's really what we asked for with, you know, the, um, the Wilcox Building now, you know, going back to that, and brought a proposal to the city, and it was reviewed, and so, anyway, but yeah, um, I'm getting off topic for that, that would be great, though, if we could begin with that.
Okay, so, I got my clarification on that. Uh, just a couple other quick things. Um, next week, Penny will give a final update on Camp Leavenworth, so I won't steal that thunder, but it is constantly amazing how everything comes together at the end. Uh, the turnout we've had from local businesses, from 5K runners, from vendors, has been, has been really, really great, so I'm excited next week for Penny to give that update. And then for Camp Leavenworth, um, coming up quickly, a couple other quick things, uh, we are going to do a hard close of October 15th, uh, for the splash park, so we can winterize it, we're going to get that. The reason we're putting that out now is because people are still renting the shelter for birthday parties and stuff, so, uh, we're going to have that, because we got to remove all the features, winterize all the equipment, and so that takes a while. The Doggie Splash went really well at, at Woman, uh, popular end-of-the-season event. Uh, and then next week, after, besides the study session, which have a few items, we will have a special meeting, uh, we need to get the health insurance renewals, um, passed, so we can get that information out to employees before we start open enrollment and start the new plan year, which is at the beginning of December, so that'll be before you, as a special meeting item next week. Don't like to do that on study sessions, but we have to get that passed, so we can start, uh, administering...
Sure.
The new plan, so, that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Kramer. Um, go around the table with, uh, maybe starting with Commissioner Leonhard?
No, I think she's gone. We might spot her.
Okay, yeah, she's gone, okay, all right, no problem.
Um, just one thing, I attended the, the opening of the, uh, the campaign for the United Way, uh, this, uh, led just late last week. Uh, they are starting their campaign to run through the end of this year, and all I can do is, uh, I, I would, I would say that it behooves you to contribute what you can to the United Way, uh, because it pays back to folks in our community, and it stays right here in our community, in the county, uh, the United Way of Leavenworth County, that money stays here and helps people here, so I would say be generous as much as you can.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to, I have a few words I want to say here. I, um, am sorry that I couldn't have been at the hearing. Um, I, I was, had something planned for a year, and I had to be gone, but, um, and, and there was no way I could call in, but I, I had some comments I wanted to make, and I know we, we have voted, and everything is done, is done now, but I just wanted to give a little history, uh, over the last few years, of budget history. Um, when former Mayor Mark Preisinger came to the commission in tw- 2009, the mill rate for the city of Leavenworth was fifty-two-point-three mills. During the next couple of years, due to the housing bust and the recession that we had, the property values dropped. So, at that time, they had to cut two firefighter positions, two, two police detectives, and some other jobs at City Hall, as well as other projects. There were tough times in the cuts they had to make, hurt the entire city. Um, one reason I wrote this, I'm writing this, is because I, I thought maybe we were going to cut funds from economic development, and I just want to stress how important economic development is to the taxing of our city. Um, at that time, fifty-two-point-three mills was the highest of all the cities of first class in Kansas. We also had the lowest sales tax of the cities of the first class. Um, Commissioner Preisinger had actually argued to have the sales tax raised by a vote of the people, and use, uh, that increase to lower the mill levy. Um, finally, in August 2, 2014, it was put to the ballot, it had to be a vote of the people, um, and the only thing the commission could do was to get it on the ballot, and it went into effect in 2015. Now, the sales tax passed by seventy-two percent of the vote, they immediately were able to lower the mill levy from fifty-two-point-three to twenty-one mills, by twenty-one mills to thirty-one mills. So we were, went from fifty-two to thirty-one, a forty percent reduction, and that, at that time, was the highest property tax reduction in the entire United States. At, you know, the last meeting, we were looking at a budget of twenty-two-point-nine mills, ten mills, almost ten mills below, and now we are at ten mills below that. Um, we, the city of Leavenworth now, this, have the second lowest property tax of any city of the first, um, what do you call it, CFC, city of the first class. Only Overland Park is lower because they are so laden with retail, but if you look at Overland Park's property tax, it's gone up nearly sixty percent in the last ten years because of retail falling off. They are still the lowest. What did the commission have to cut out of the budget? They didn't cut at that time, when they lowered that mill levy by twenty-one mills? They didn't cut a thing. Every nickel raised in the additional sales tax reduced property tax by the same amount. In the following years, the commission and city manager made a concerted effort to boost economic development activities, and finally got five new hotels, this has just been since I've been here, five new hotels, which brings in tax from out of town to our city. Sales tax, not to mention property tax and transient guest tax. At the budget was proposed at the last meeting was twenty-two-point-nine, which, for the city part, was revenue neutral, and I was happy with that. Um, and you know, this all pays our police, fire, general running of the city, and, um, anyway, our, our state representative keeps telling voters to call their commissioners and school board members to demand revenue neutral. However, the state of Kansas is not revenue neutral, they had an increase of over thirteen percent in revenue last year due to an increase in your property taxes, and spent an increase of over thirteen-point-two percent, of thirteen-point-two percent over the previous year. Spending the year prior to that increased by twelve-point-eight percent over the previous year. So my house has doubled in valuation over the past five years, and no matter how much we cut taxes here, our taxes will still increase due to the valuation formula.